Hello.
Good evening, everyone. My apologies for a late start today. We had a little mix up with having the credentials for Zoom. Now we've gotten what we need and I think we're ready to begin.
One question, can the public get in via the link on the town website?
They should be able to. I clicked on the link of the town website and was able, you know, it brought me right into the meeting room. So, I mean, and there's members of the public that are flooding in, so.
Okay.
And other committees, we've got Henry, we've got some phone numbers. So.
Yeah, I know Tim Garcia is trying to get in.
Okay.
I got in Jeff, thank you.
Oh, you're on, you're down there. Okay, great.
We don't have our soon to be chair, however.
Uh, yeah, you know, I'm gonna just.
Nathan, do you wanna, you wanna share posting with me? Deacon had asked me to host.
Yeah, you know what? That would be good. Okay, I'm making your co-host. So for now, I guess the thing would be to try and you know, let people into the meeting.
Right.
I'm just gonna blast an email out.
Jeff, you wanna call Deacon?
Okay.
Cool, thank you.
The last I heard Steve Bressler was trying to get ahold of Deacon.
He just joined.
Oh, okay. He's here.
There's Steve. Where's Deacon at?
Deacon was here somewhere.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, phew. And we did it. Well, thank you, Nathan. You got to Grace before I did.
Actually, my, yeah, Michael did. Michael was able to get ahold of her and hey, you know.
Team effort.
We got the thing going. It was a team effort. This is great.
I was afraid we'd have to reschedule. So, how many, how many members do we have now?
Six. Just Robert's not here, I don't think.
Okay, well, so I'll read the governor's announcement and, and we can, we can go from there. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting clerk.
Deacon, you turn your camera on? Uh-oh. Oh, there you are.
It's not an improvement. So, I think the first item on the agenda is, is election of chair. It's the first meeting of the new year.
I'm happy to nominate Deacon as chair.
And who was that?
I'm happy to second it.
There's Steve.
Okay.
Okay. Other candidates? Here. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Olive Sting. All right, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. So the next item is a public comment. If, if anybody would like to speak now because of imminent departure, or if you want to address something that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to do it, so. So I guess we can move along. I know that the original plan was for, for Steve to be able to take over. So that Nathan could concentrate more on the, on doing the minutes, so.
It's done, Deacon. I, I am admitting people and Nathan's taking notes.
Perfect. Well, you guys are ahead of me.
And I'll keep track. I'll, I'll watch and see if any hands are raised.
Okay, cuz, yeah. Okay. So, well, let's move on to Timothy Garcia and the, and the Wheelock Annual Report.
Well, I'll kick it off, I guess. It was the last meeting that let's see, what's chronology on this? At the last meeting, I think.
Tim couldn't come.
Huh?
Tim couldn't come to the last meeting.
Right. And we had a, we had an annual report at that time that that was a little bit less involved than the one we have now. And I, I, I don't think we had the current one at that time. But since then, another report has been filed, which is pretty prodigious. So we have that now. Well, there was also talk last time of trying to get a field visit together before this meeting. But that hasn't, that hasn't worked out. So I think one of the things we're gonna do tonight is try to get a field visit arranged on our calendars with the ConCon and the planning board before the September 13th planning board meeting. Yeah, and so Tim knows all that and that's, that's why he's here.
So I guess I have a question procedurally. I don't know. Tim, do you, are you gonna sort of do a presentation, go with the report and we should hold our questions, or Deacon, do you have a preference with how we proceed?
I do not have a preference. It seems to me either would be okay.
I didn't really, I didn't plan a presentation. I certainly, I think Jordan Harrison, who's the site manager, is also on the line. He, he could probably read you through the report, or, I mean, we're more than happy to just jump right into questions.
Okay. I got a bunch of questions if that would make it easier for you.
That's fine. Let's, let's, let's go.
That's cool, Deacon?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. So, number one, I'll say thank you for sending the report. It's helpful to actually get something in writing. So that's a good start to the process. Um, I, I'm, I'm just gonna, my questions are sort of in order of the special permit and the report, so we can just sort of walk through it. And so the first one is this seems really sort of basic, but in, in the picture of the front gate that documents the sign, can you, so on the sign, it says, let me just make it bigger so I can read it myself. It says Bay Four Energy, which is not Next Terra. So can you explain who Bay Four Energy, since they're on the sign facing the public?
Yeah, Bay Four Energy is a contractor that we send out there. So obviously, like myself, Jordan coordinates with the Bay Four team and they are same as us, just field, field technicians that go out there, maintain the site. They also have, you know, a 24/7 remote operations center as well, and they operate a number of our sites across the US.
Okay, so just technically speaking, though, Next Terra is the operator of the facility?
Yes.
So I would suggest, just given the special permit, that the sign needs to say Next Terra somewhere, because Bay Four is just a contractor. And I'm guessed, and I guess the second part of that's just in the same condition. The 800-801-9912, is that an emergency 24-hour number, or is that sort of like a main number for Bay Four?
Hey, this is Jordan Harrison. If you can hear me, that is the emergency contact number, so 24-hour.
Okay.
Emergency contact info, phone number for Bay Four.
Cool, okay. So I guess for that second operation condition, the only thing I would suggest to be compliant is we just get Next Terra on there, cuz it's been a changing cast of characters and it's, if I'm confused, I'm sure others would be confused. And the number is the most important thing, but just for accuracy. So thank you for that.
Understood, yeah.
Excuse me for a second. We have a, a question from iPhone. Hands up. I don't know who that is. But go ahead.
Hi, yes, Mary Lou Conca. I live on Wendell Road. Earlier today, I sent to the planning board a big list of questions. I'll just take out a little paragraph and ask. Okay, so. Okay, Michael, yes.
Let me go through all my questions first and some on the board.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go ahead of you.
I got a bunch of them. But I'll, I'll let you know when I'm done. I might cover some of the ones you have, so.
That's my fault, because I was just trying to be the host here, so go ahead.
That's okay. So that's, for operation condition number three, I know that you included in this annual report, the, the commissioning report. Tim, do you know if, because getting it to the planning board is not the same as the select board, did the select board originally, or does anyone on the planning board know if select board ever got this document? The commissioning report?
Wouldn't they, wouldn't that have been delivered when the pilots began? Because the town didn't receive any pilots until the project became active. Wasn't, or wasn't the commissioning report and the, and the pilot sort of done at the same time?
I wasn't on the select board when the pilots started, so I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I wouldn't assume. I, I guess just someone should figure it out and, you know, if we, if we want to, the planning board could forward it to the select board. I just wanted to point out that Tim, at least, I don't know how much she's familiar with the small town dynamics, but you know, if it's supposed to go to the select board, we wouldn't necessarily have the wherewithal to send it to, in an organized kind of way, more ad hoc. So that's a, a small thing.
So, so that would be a request for Tim to get that commissioning report directly to the select board of the town?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, moving on to operation edition number four, there's a couple.
Sorry, Michael, just one question. Jordan, do the select board, they want just that commissioning report?
I don't think they even know they want it. It's just supposed to be.
Gotcha. I, I can make sure they are, they get a copy of that.
Cool, great, thanks. And no sweat, I, since you, there's no picture, just feel free to interrupt me. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Can't see you. So number four, which is the emergency preparedness component. Again, this is sort of a question, but do you guys know, Next Terra or, or Jordan, if the electrical schematic and site plan ever got to the fire chief, highway superintendent, and emergency management director, who is also the fire chief? That seems like actually more important of the two documentations. More than the commissioning report, but I don't know if they actually have the documentation, or if anyone on the planning board noticed that.
Yeah, so, so from my end, I'm, I'm not confident, say, either way, I believe it was sent in post-construction. I can I, I can get in touch with the, the fire chief and make sure that he has a copy.
Great, thank you, Jordan. Appreciate it. And then just part of that little paragraph sentence, whatever this is. We got, so if I can skip that. Okay, so in terms of the signage, it required, it asked for a responsible person to be on the sign. So, I'll just look, you know, whether it's sufficient or not to just have the Bay Four, cuz it's a 24-hour number, but at least in the conditions, it says contact information and, and the responsible person. I don't know, Jeff, did you, was the intent to actually have a person named for the sign?
There certainly was a person with the, with the past two. There was
Kevin.
Name Kevin Sullivan, and then there was Jeff Masel after that. He was sort of assumed that mantle. Yeah, there, there, there should be. Now, is, is that supposed to go on the sign, or is it supposed to be known?
It's supposed to be on the sign. Signage shall be attached to the gate, providing the emergency contact information and the responsible person.
Okay, so that would probably be either, at this point, Jordan or Tim?
Right, yeah, that, that'd probably be myself. I can, when, when we swatch, swap out those signs with our Next Terra sign, I'll, I'll make sure that we have a person assigned. It, it probably will be myself, but I'll get confirmation on my end.
Cool. Okay, and then this next parts of that same condition. And again, it's, it's, this is just checking to see if it happened. Seems it's important that it does. That the fire department would be provided a means to open the gate to the access road and have access to emergency shut-offs for the array. So do we know if that is the case?
Yeah, so we did share the, there's a combination lock on the gate. The fire department does have the combo there. And then part of our communication with them is, you know, if there's ever an emergency combo lock, you know, for whatever reason, frozen, you know, whatever the case may be, they, they do have permission to, to cut that lock.
Okay. Cool, great, thank you. And then the last part of that, that condition is about the training session. And I saw in the annual report that you're gonna schedule one. I think I just wanted to mention just for I, integrity, I guess we'd were, is from my read of the special permit, this should have happened before the ca, the pandemic. So I get that it had to get postponed because of the pandemic, you know, shutdown and requirements and all, but you guys were not on the scene, but it should have happened well before then. So it's, thank you for scheduling it. I think it's important. So that's that. I gotta just think, two more conditions to cover.
Michael, before you.
Yeah.
That last condition that should have happened before the pandemic, I missed.
Oh, I'm sorry, training session of the fire department and other town officials responsible for emergency response. It's, it's the last sentence in condition four.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so moving on to condition five. It says, the annual report will also provide information on the maintenance, maintenance completed on the course of the year. And so, Tim, we, we discussed this last month, but since you weren't with us, we couldn't get the explanation, but the chart that you included, which is the maintenance completed during 2020. For me, the two things that make this not very helpful is, one, it's, it's all in-house techno geek language, so it doesn't really explain stuff. So it's not really helpful in terms of knowing what the maintenance was. And there's things that say like breakdown major. One could assume that it's significant, but you don't know, because it's hard to interpret. The other thing is, there's no dates. So there's only worker IDs, a description, a status. And the, and what I think is probably the coding name, but it would be helpful if you could, you know, able to maybe resubmit this document with dates attached and maybe some, rather than the just request description, maybe a, you know, non-techno, techno description for someone who wants to know if they should actually pay attention to this as important, or if it's just minor, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that's fair. I think we can certainly make it kind of easier to read. Even, even myself, I kind of get my, you know, my eyes glass over at some of the stuff that George, Jordan, who's very tech, in, in the technical weeds, can definitely get in there and do. So we can certainly bring that simplify it. And then I think we actually do have the date, so that shouldn't be too hard to, to get out and over to you.
Great.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and then the only other thing in condition number five that I had is just to point out for everybody that, according to this, the next annual report, which would be the second one that we've ever gotten, is due by February 15th. So just to put that, you know, if people want to put that in their tickler on their calendar. But it should be 45 days after the end of the calendar year, so if we want to get on schedule, that would be the next one.
And, and we have that as, as our date as well.
Cool.
We definitely took note of that.
Great. And then I only have two more. One's a small one, so condition number eight. And this, this might be the result of this maintenance thing not being as intelligible as one might want, but it says mowing in and around the solar array shall occur no more than once a year. And I know, Tim, you said that it happens in October. Looking at the work orders, it looks like there was vegetation abatement twice. I'm presuming there are different dates. One says October, the other doesn't have a date. So, I don't know, Jordan, did you have any insight into that other one, the non-October vegetation abatement?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, I, I do apologize. I just not have the dates. That's something I, I did miss in that table. But yeah, the, the other vegetation abatement service is kind of walking through. Of course, we have kind of a little more wild growth. So knocking down anything that is shading panels growing between panels, so, so mainly by hand or like weed whackers where
Okay.
that applies kind of underneath the panels.
Got it, okay.
That's also for, for safety reasons too, Mike. We don't want the grass growing right on top of the panels, right?
Yeah, oh, no, that makes sense. And I think it's, it's consistent with the special permit. Cuz it says occasional cutting of plants, you know, for the shade is permitted, so it's not an issue. I was just trying to understand it. So that's.
I, I would definitely expect, and judging from what I've seen at, at the site, I would definitely expect probably two times a year, one time in that October, November timeframe where we mow. And then at least one, like by, I'll call it a by-hand mow, or where it's just, you know, we're just clearing the panels to make sure that they're free and clear of the stuff.
Cool, okay, that's helpful. And then the last thing that I had, which other people might have better insight into than me, but is the whole discussion of the, the wildflower meadow. And I know in the annual report you submitted, it's, this condition 11 is a little confusing, cuz on the one hand, it talks about the wild, the wildflower meadow being stabilized and, and established sufficiently. But then the 90% ground surface coverage is both for either the wildflower meadow or native plants. In the annual report, Tim, you, you had noted that there's 90% native plants, which I guess is up for discussion. Some people had questions last month, but I guess my question is the first part, which is it doesn't seem from what people have said. I, I haven't been on the site. But if there is a wildflower that's stabilized and established sufficiently, cuz it talks about reseeding application for as many growing seasons as necessary. So it's sort of, that's, that's a gray area. I'm just curious what, you know, where you're at with that.
Yeah, so first I, I should say, I am aware of two seeding events that have occurred at this point. One was done, I think, around the construction time. I don't believe we did that particular one, but then there was a seeding done around the time that we started installing the shoots berry battery. That was then. So we received that, and that was last year. Since, since then, we are planning to do another seeding. We're, we're trying to get you know, we've noticed a lot of like rocky terrain, or I should, I should say like gra, almost like gravel, but not really gravel, just like rocky dirt. That's causing some issues, and I'm sure if and when we, we get out there and, and see, you'll see some of that. There is a some, you know, we are planning on doing another reseeding. I wouldn't say, we're probably around, you know, probably between 75 and 90. It's hard to kind of measure and come up with the percentage offhand. But, you know, we are planning on doing a receipt regardless, at least the second half of this year.
Cool, great, thank you. So I'm done with my, I don't know if people want to chime in on this one, but I'm done with my questions. And just for the board to know, I only have one comment on the minutes, so this evens out, so.
Jeff?
Can I just, I just want to make sure, what was the name of the, the company that's on the sign now? That's a contractor?
Bay Four Energy.
Base Four?
No, Bay Four.
Pay For.
B A Y.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yo, Jeff.
Okay, so, I have, I, I've been keeping track, and I guess Nathan has too. I, I have like eight action items here that, that have resulted from Michael's questioning. And I just want to make sure we're all on board with what these action items are. So, and Nathan, I think you've been ke, you've been doing the minutes, right, and taking, taking notes, so. Next Terra is gonna go on the sign.
Yeah.
In addition to the company that actually is up here doing the work. Commissioning report is gonna go to the select board unless it's already been set. The electrical schematic is going to be, go, go to the fire chief unless it's already been delivered. Jordan is going to be listed as the responsible person on, on the sign. Jordan or, or somebody else who, who is a responsible person, but probably Jordan. An emergency training sc, session is gonna be scheduled, probably this year. We're gonna work towards better info on, on the maintenance, so we really know what, what's going on. The second report is due by February 15th of next year. And there's another seeding being planned in 2021, perhaps after some rocks and things skirted out of there. So that that accurately reflect, reflect the eight action items?
Yeah.
Say that. Yep, that's what I had.
So for, for me, I, I, I think I'm, I don't have any questions at this point. I may, after going on the site, I'm mostly interested in drainage and how that's holding up. Principally from the, the access roads, cuz that's the area that will create runoff, and the revegetation, and what plants are out there and how that's going. So I'm gonna wait until I actually see the site. Oh, and I have another question. Who controls the site now? And who gets to say who goes out there and who doesn't go out there? You are the less E, I guess. So do you control who has access to the site, or is it the owner, or is it the lessor at this point?
We, we control who gets inside the fence.
Okay, so, so someone going through the gate and up into the site. Okay. So, so someone going through the gate and up into the site that, that's entirely on the area that you're leasing, that would be under your control?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Then I think at this point, all planning board members can go on that site?
Uh, yes, assuming, I know I sent out a form, but as long as we follow the, the safety protocols of our, our operations team. Yes, the planning board can go on site.
Okay. So, so you don't have any, you don't have any knowledge of restrictions that were placed on people going on the site with your permission that are, are a result of conditions in your lease or anything like that?
Uh, I cannot think of any off the top of my head. No. I, I believe generally, generally speaking, our lease allows us to operate the site, which includes compliance with the special permit commission, conditions, which also allows you guys to come out there and, and check out the site whenever you, you guys need to.
Okay. Good.
That, that's, that's my general understanding. I, I, without looking through everything and tying it all, but that's how I, I understand it to work.
Well, a, a number of years ago, long before you arrived on the scene and before the project was ever permitted, certain people were trespassed against going on the site. And that, so I'm, I'm just wondering if that's still in effect? If, if you grant permission as the lessie for people to go on the site, whether you're bound by anything that the owner may have done prior to your involvement?
Uh, no, but I mean, we are also responsible for everybody on that site. So if, if you are going on the site and we're granting you on there, then we obviously can, you know, the situation kind of, you, you stick to, you know, the reason that we're having you there, for example. I don't, I don't want to have, you know, somebody going out and having a picnic, for example, when we're supposed to be checking out and touring the site. But yeah, I mean, it would, it would generally fall out. I would agree with that statement.
Okay. So you have a release form that's been sent to us and I, the, the field visit will involve planning board members and conservation commission members. But I don't believe it will involve the general public, just members who can attend from the two boards. And we'll all sign the, the release form.
There's, Jeff, I'll also say that there's general equipment, when I say equipment, I mean, like you have to have closed toe shoes. We can send that over to you, but you, I think there's just a couple of different, you know, everybody has to be wearing jeans and, and, you know, certain proper clothing attire. Hopefully that's not too much of a hassle for you guys, but I just wanted to kind of make that clarification. It, you know, we'll send that over to you right away.
Okay.
I think it's just like clothes, it's like work shoes and, and and jeans. Is that right, Jordan? Is there anything else I'm missing?
Right. Yeah. Ju- just for a tour, closed toe shoes, long pants. I would prefer long shirt. I guess the weather may dictate that, but, but yeah, long pants, closed toe shoes. And then escort for, for the group that's touring.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And, and you know, is there, do you want to try and plan a date now? Or do you want to go back and, you know, shoot some emails of some dates that work for you? For an actual tour? We, we would probably, you know, because myself and Jordan will be flying to go out there and see everybody for the tour. We just prefer probably just not next week, only because my wife needs some more time to tell her that I'm going to be gone for a week. But, I mean, I'll, I make it work, whatever work. I just want to make sure that go from there, you know, what works for the group.
Well, is, is there any, I know the Concom wanted to go. Is there anyone here that can speak from the, for the Concom as to dates that they're available?
I don't see anyone on the Concom on the call.
If, if that's the case, I mean, I'll, I'll, Jeff, how about this? I'll send you an email, either tonight, tomorrow, and you can circulate it with the folks around and, and we'll get some dates together.
Okay.
And we're, and you know, we're happy to make whatever work. We just want to make, you know, I have to make travel plans to get out there too.
Okay. Good. Good. Yeah. As, as long as we do it before the 13th of September and you get as many people as we can involved, that'd be great. Okay. That's it for me.
Any, anybody else? Want to pitch in?
Mary Lou, still around?
Yeah, Mary Lou, you can go ahead now. Unmute yourself.
Thank you. So Michael covered a lot of my questions. I have a little more specific questions in regard to weeds and bush growth. I want to know what chemicals are being used and how often. I also am curious, how is the area wildlife, you know, like the rabbits and the bears, et cetera? Well, rabbits being controlled, like I've never seen it. So is the fence so tight that there can be no animal life? And when this first came to Chutesbury, we were all told it was going to earn $1 million a year. Now that I have the WeLock people as well as planning board, I'm curious if that has ever happened. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I can take the, the first couple. It's Jordan from Nextera. So we do not use any chemical herbicides on the site. Everything's either mechanically mowed or hand trimmed on the site. So, so no, no chemicals on site. The next question regarding wildlife. I haven't gotten any reports of any wildlife on the site. Not, not really a question I've asked, though I can, I can definitely reach out to the text that, that, you know, respond to issues on site and kind of note, but in general, the, the fence, and, and this is something we do check, you know, as a safety concern. We check for, you know, gaps in the fence. You know, that, that there's no damage to the fence. So, so no, you know, nothing's in there that shouldn't be.
And to, to further clarify, we aren't doing anything, aside from the fence, we are not doing anything to control the wildlife, right, Jordan? We're not, we're not calling anything. We're not, it, it's pretty much just aside from the fence, the fence and our, our solar project, we're not doing anything to actually control the wildlife beyond our project being there. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's good to know.
Uh, can I just elaborate, Mary Lou? Just the, the fence, the fence is up six to eight inches off the ground. It doesn't, doesn't prevent animals, small animals from crawling under. You know, I suppose people could crawl under too, but you know, there, there is a, there is a gap intentionally left in the fence to allow small animals to, to pass through.
Okay. So I even, I have another, I, I, I have another question. If, if Timothy or Jordan are aware that there was a certain area protected due to Native American burial places, are, are either of you gentlemen aware of that? And a follow-up question to that is, what would you do in the event that a tribe, a local tribe contacted you to have access to these burial places?
So I can, I, I do know, or I was aware and Jordan is aware, our operations team were of a certain, I would say, protected area in the middle that we were not to disturb. So we did know about it. In terms of if, what would happen if a tribe were to contact me, I, I would have to say like what, you know, what's the tribe exactly? Why? If they just wanted to visit the site.
What if one of, yeah, what if one of their ancestors, you know, that they have in their own records was buried there? I mean, it's just like a cemetery, right?
Honestly, I, you know, it, right now that area is, you know, surrounded with high voltage equipment. There's a lot of, you know, safety concerns with just letting anybody in on the site. That's not to say that it would be an outright no. It, it probably, we probably have to gauge it kind of situation by situation i- in those cases. You know, it is, it is dangerous to just let somebody on the site and, and near that equipment, especially since our site, I think is on both sides of that protected area. So I mean, they would be completely surrounded by solar panels if they really wanted to get out there.
Tim, it'd be safe to say, because I could appreciate the case by case, that if, if that, rather than dealing with the hypotheticals, if, if someone, if there was actually a situation where someone was interested in that, you would be the person, person to contact?
Yeah, eventually it would come to me or somebody from our community outreach team that we have, like Mark, we have like a whole subset. It would probably start with me, would absolutely, you know, probably talk to me first. I'd probably take that request and follow it through to like our community outreach team and see, see what we can and cannot do. I, I would not outright say that it would, you know, he, he'd definitely be able to get on our site, but I, I don't want to outright say that he definitely couldn't either.
Oh, wow. So you, you, how I'm hearing it, you would consider?
I, I would say that it is. It's probably, Jordan, you could probably I wouldn't, I wouldn't confirm it, you know, I wouldn't say that, I would hear him out, but I, I don't think that I can guarantee him to get on the site is what I'm probably saying.
Okay. So can I tell you that there is a Massachusetts general law that protects these burial places? Are you all aware of that? If you're not, it's MGL chapter 114, section seven, just for you all to reference it. May I also, since I, I'm still considering myself having the floor, address something Jeff Lacy spoke about. He spoke about the
Before you move on to Jeff Lacy, would you repeat that Mass general law again for me?
Oh, certainly. Chapter 114, section seven. I know it by heart. I'll send it to you, Nathan. Okay. You're welcome. So Jeff Lacy, he was talking about no trespass orders. They're actually all posted around different trees in town by the lesser of, of, that you guys have this solar project on. They are outdated. I have been in contact with the Franklin Sheriff's office, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. And I can give a direct quote. They usually last about a year. So I, I don't know why that's an issue with our town. I don't understand it legally. They're not valid. So I would hope that both gentlemen to whom I'm addressing, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Jordan would take, or just to know that. And I thank you for my time. I'm running out of battery.
Well, thank you, Mary Lou.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too.
So are we wrapped up on this issue? Is there, is there, is there, does anyone else want to say anything? Because otherwise it seems like, it seems like we've got a, a plan to proceed and we can move on. I mean, our next, our next customer is anxiously awaiting.
Thank you. Is it, Jeff, if it's all right? I, I was gonna log off unless you had any other question?
Well, I'm, 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 I'm going to contact you about the scheduling, the site visit. We'll get some dates and then I'll do my, I'll do my polling up here and, and we'll come up with, we'll come up with something for the planning board and the conservation commission.
Sounds great. I'm, I'm looking forward to meeting the group.
Yeah. I want to thank you both for putting up with all my questions. So thank you.
Yeah, not a problem.
Not a problem at all. It's not a problem. We get questions like this all the time, Mike. It's totally fine.
Thank you for coming.
Yep. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Somehow we seem to have arrived at Brad's bri at the right time. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but it's, it's remarkable. So Brad, what do you have to say? I understand you have a new plan?
I have a new plan. I sent it out to all of you via PDF today. I hope you all got it. I dropped a new set of full-size plans with the town clerk today with a new form A. Basically, it's the same thing as the plan I gave you, Deacon. I simply removed the southernmost lot, which used to be labeled Lot Three. The one closest to the intersection of West Pelham Road and Sand Hill Road. I did that because I'm still trying to figure out options for whether there's any way to move forward with any housing, whether it's condos or single-family homes that's designed for senior living. But I have had Ward Smith from Wendell out on the land to do some wetlands mapping. And there are, there are some concerns about wetlands and how much land there'll be to actually develop. So right now, what I'm looking to move forward with is just the subdivision for breaking a small piece of land off, excuse me, to sell to the Vinskies so that they can preserve their sightlines and privacy. A small piece on the backside, actually a larger piece on the backside for Carolyn Keith to preserve her sightlines and privacy. And then one building lot to the north of what's currently the Weaver House and the lot for the Weaver House. And that would leave 33 acres with 300 and feet of frontage available for me to continue to explore what options are available.
Why don't I bring up that plan view, the plan that Brad's talking about, so we can all see it?
Great idea, if I can find it.
Hold on for just a second. For some reason.
I've got it too, Steve, if you need it.
Well, I have it. I just, it's, I'm trying to share my screen. It's not allowing me to. So for some reason. Hold on. Let me try one other thing here. Interesting. Yeah, it's not showing up. Let me see.
Oh, you know why? I think Nathan, you, you made Steve a co-host, but I don't know if he has full
Oh, that could be.
I, I have ready access to the plan if someone
No, it, it's not a matter of having access. It's a matter of being able to share on screen. I've, I've got it. It's just Nathan's got to give me the ability to share.
Okay.
So Nathan, can you do that?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make you the host. So that's, that's it.
So, that's, that's a, uh, let me try this. Let me see if this will work here. Yeah, no, it's, um, it's not allowing me to. So, let me see.
Oh, I can, for some reason, I was able to do it now. Want me to just do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on one sec. Just, I need a, okay, um, share screen. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Cool.
Right. So, this is basically the same plan I presented to you last time, except, um, in the bottom right corner, there was a Lot Three um, that, um, encompassed, um, around the, the little square down there. That's an existing residence on the corner of West Pelham Road and Sand Hill Road. And I had, um, a lot, um, down in that corner, um, that basically, um, had boundary lines around that one. And I've removed that from the plan. The rest of the plan is exactly the same. So, on the very northern end, there's a little over an acre that's gonna, um, be sold to the Vinskies. Um, that increases, um, their landholding, protects their sightline and privacy. And then there's, um, uh, that's for Carolyn Keith back there in the back left corner. Um, she wanted to increase her landholding and, you know, I want all my butters to be happy, um, not trying to make waves with um, anybody. Um, so, and then there's a, a building lot between what's currently the Weaver House and what would be the Vinskies additional land. Yeah, right there. Um, and then Lot Two is what's currently the Weaver House, the, the dwelling you see, I'll be right, right there. Um, I'm in the process of putting in a new septic and well. And I've removed, um, what used to be Lot Three down in the, the bottom corner. I'm gonna keep that thirty-three acres contiguous for now, um, to continue to see what the options are. Um, still would love to work with you folks on some sort of plan to develop, um, anywhere from eight to maybe a dozen, um, condo units that were designed for senior living. Um, but, eh, you know, that would depend on what we can do for backlot development. Or I, and if that never comes to fruition, then I guess I sell that whole thirty-three acres off as an estate lot.
Brad, just out of curiosity, um, you know, I'm sure you've been looking into the, uh, the senior living, uh, home situation and, uh, are there any state programs that come into play for that sort of thing or?
There, there's potentially some grant programs. There's, um, um, there's a couple parties here in town that I've been talking to that are significantly interested in staying in town. Um, but there's currently no housing available for what their next stage of living would be. Um, unfortunately, um, it looks like from about where the, the Vinskies one acre lot meets right there, right? Go back to where it meets their current boundary line. From that point, straight down across, everything to the west of that um, would be Ward Smith has indicated is, um, a wooded swamp. Um, not that it's all wet at the forest level, but it's, um, populated with species of ferns and, um, mountain laurel and, um, plant species that are, um, indicative of wetlands. Um, so depending upon, um, how we would be able to move forward with further investigation as to what would be allowed to be developed in there would determine the size and scope of any project to put any senior housing in there. Um, or whether it just becomes too difficult. And at that point, I would just consider the whole thirty-three acres in a state lot.
Thanks.
Hey, Brad?
Yeah.
Probably, um, you know, all, all we're really doing tonight is the, the A and R, which I don't, I don't see any trouble with. Um, but in, in, as far as the, the development of Lot Three, I mean, where that would probably fit would be under Article Five in the zoning bylaw, open space design. And there's, um, there, there are formulas in there that, that will assess Lot Three and will spit out numbers to you as to how much you can expect in terms of housing units.
Yeah.
You know, all those, the, the wetland would be deducted from, from the total. And then you, you do a net area calculation and then you divide. Planning Board has a worksheet. Um, if, if, if you email me, I can send it to you. Uh, but that worksheet is, is, will, will run you through all those numbers. And that should give you an idea of, of really what that lot's gonna yield you in terms of units.
Right. And, and I understand that. And that's a longer-term, forward-looking project. Um, right now, um, I, I have a party that is, that I, I have an agreement with for rehabbing the Weaver property. Um, so, and I have a party interested in Lot One. So, this is why I've decided to move forward with this subdivision, so I can get the Vinskies what they need. I can get Carolyn Keith what she needs. I can move forward on those first two projects and then take a, a much slower approach to, um, what's doable with the, the rest of the thirty-three acres.
Okay.
Whether that, whether that gets subdivided in the future or remains contiguous, um, you know, will, will be determined down the road.
Um, um, what, how does this, how does this elimination of, of Lot Three affect the conformity issue?
Um, the elimination of Lot, what I used to have on the plan?
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the, there was an issue of, of conformity having to do with the house being too close to the road? I mean, is that?
I, I, I spoke with, um, Jim Hawkins and, um, you know, according to Jim, you know, that's been done eight thousand times in Franklin County over the, I'm sorry, I, that's just a stupid number that I pulled out of the air. Um, he's not concerned about, um, the building being, um, less than the current seventy-five foot setback from the front.
Yeah, that sounds about right. As long, yeah, as, as, as long as the lot you're putting around it is fully conforming in every other respect, you're not creating any new non-conformity, things non-conforming now. Um, and you're putting a lot around it that every other respect is conforming. So.
And, and that's basically exactly what he said, Jeff.
Yeah.
Is that a ZBA thing that has to get signed off on, or is it just de facto?
Well, it, it, it would only be if the, if the building inspector decided not to, um, decided that, that it was a violation or not to issue a building permit, uh, based on, on the, the house having a new lot. Um, then possibly it could go to the ZBA, uh, for either variance or for an appeal of the building inspector's decision. But it doesn't sound like it, it's gonna go either one of those directions. It, it would have to be the building inspector making a decision that, um, that, that, that there's a, a, um, that the house on Lot Two is no longer lawfully non-conforming because it has a new lot around it. And he's clearly not gonna do that. So, sort of game over. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like, would you like me to make a motion that we approve this?
Well, yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, it looks like the discussion is winding up. I think that's good. I, I don't have any more questions. So, make a motion, Jeff.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the three lot plan of Brad's Bry, um, as, as, as presented.
Is it three or four?
Oh, I knew you were gonna do that as soon as I stopped sharing.
Well, no.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, you've got Lot One, Lot Two, um, the big one, and then Parcel B.
So, actually, it's, we're taking one lot as it exists and we're subdividing it into five units. Three of them are conforming building lots and two of them are parcels to be added to existing a butter's property, and they're not conforming building lots.
Okay, so, so, but actually, there are five new, there are five new parcels.
Correct.
Could, could we just keep this simple and, and have a motion to approve the, uh, that, the A and R subdivision submitted by Brad? I.
I, I've already made that motion.
But you, you used the number four, Jeff.
I, I, I used the number three, because there's, there are three lots here. The, the other things, the other two things don't appear to be lots. They.
They're parcels.
They may be parcels. Um, but in, in our zoning definitions, it, it says an air, a lot, an area in one ownership with definite boundaries used or available for use as site of one or more buildings.
Okay.
All right, so that's accurate.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because, because those, you, you couldn't put a building on either one of those.
Okay, good, good.
Did we have a second?
Second.
I don't think yet.
I second.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'll, I'll call the roll. Um, Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. And Robert's not here.
There we go.
Okay, so, uh,
So, so, so now, now we have to figure out how to get this thing signed. Um, Deacon, have you given that any thought?
Well, I, I think I probably need to go up to the clerk's office. I mean, I'm authorized, I'm authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
Is, is that in, in all plans, or do we have to do that for, for e- each time that we're trying to do that?
No, no, I, I have ongoing authority to, to sign plans.
Okay.
Which I can do at the clerk's office.
And I dropped, uh, so there's a full set of five plans plus a Mylar, plus a Form A that I dropped off, uh, this morning, um, with the town clerk.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, and did you include a check?
I didn't, because remember the last time we talked, we weren't quite sure about whether I'm paying seventy dollars times the three building lots or seventy dollars times the five individual parcels. I don't really care which number we come out to. Um, I just need to know what you need a check filled out for.
Well, th- three times seventy is two-ten.
Right. But remember, you, we, you and I, Deacon, had talked about the language on the form where it says, I need to pay seventy dollars per building lot. And you thought that that, um, language had been incorrectly adopted into the form where it was supposed to be, uh, seventy dollars per parcel.
Yeah, well, I think, well, I think I was wrong.
Okay.
I've been apprised of that by Jeff now.
I will gladly, uh, I will gladly run a check up tomorrow morning for two hundred and ten dollars.
Oh, okay. What time do you think you'll do that? I'll make sure to arrive after you.
Uh, uh, the town clerk, I believe, arrives at, uh, ten o'clock?
Yeah.
So, I'll do it between ten and ten-thirty.
Perfect. Uh, and, um, I'll either run into you or be there after you.
Sounds great. I thank you, gentlemen and ladies, very much. And, uh, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Be well, everyone.
Take care.
Bye-bye. Thanks, Brad.
Let's, um, the June minutes.
We're gonna move, uh, move to approve the minutes of June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Do I hear a second?
A second there.
Okay, that was Steve, uh, um, discussion?
I only had one edit. Um, I guess, well, I have a question. Uh, let's see, this is in Word, so, um, Nathan, would you be willing, if, if it's an easy edit, to make the edit and finalize?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So, the only thing I would suggest, just, um, I think it was discussed this way, but it, just for the readers, in unanticipated business at the end was my statement about being unrec- unrecused from Wheelock. And I would just take that paragraph and stick it at the beginning of the Wheelock section. Since, um, cited as having, being part of that conversation, it just seems more appropriate to have it be there.
So, there will be nothing under unanticipated business?
That, that's what I would recommend, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's easy enough. You're, you're good, you're good, Nathan?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's all anybody has for discussion, then, uh.
Okay, anything else? I'll, I'll call the roll. Uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. Good. Um, and then, uh, um, Engineer Stednicki, um, had inquiry about, about, about the fees for, for the open space design and, and, and the common driveway that he expects to file uh, on behalf of Whitman. Um, and we weren't sure, we weren't sure how to charge that when, when he asked us what the fee would be. And um, my recollection is Jeff was gonna look into it and.
I, I did. And I, I did it via the, um, Mass Planters listserv that I belong to. So, sending a email question out to fellow planters. And I got twelve responses. And seven of them said that they would, um, that they would, they would, um, have one unified fee, provided the, and, and most of them said, provided the process was consolidated. So, it was one hearing, you know, like. you know, like one advertisement, one hearing. And the other, and the other five said that they would charge a separate special permit fee for each special permit sought, whether or not the hearings were consolidated. So, that's that's what I got.
What was that breakdown? Five for individual fees and consolidated, consolidated fee for, how many gave that response?
Seven. Seven towns said that, that if, if the process for the multiple special permits could be consolidated into one hearing, one proceeding, and hence advertised once, you know, the expensive advertising, then they would just charge one unified fee, which would be a single fee for a special permit, probably whatever the highest fee would be. And the other ones said that they would just charge individual fees. So, if we had a special permit for a shared driveway, they'd pay a fee for that. If there's a special permit for an open space design, it's not a subdivision, they'd pay a fee for that. And, and it wouldn't matter whether we consolidated the, consolidated the process. So, there, there was no clear, it, it wasn't a clear answer, and, you know, what I almost think is, is saying, okay, well, we'll charge one fee as long as we can consolidate the process. But then but then what if we can't consolidate the process? Do we go back and, and get more fees from a mer?
What, what would prevent us from not being able to consolidate the process?
Maybe they didn't have all the materials ready on time, you know, to hold one, one hearing. I mean, we, we could probably, we could probably manage it such that if they didn't have everything together for us to do one consolidated hearing, we would just say, all right, we're only gonna do the first one, and you pay a fee for that, and then you're gonna pay another fee because we have to do another hearing.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I'm okay with that, as long as the separate fee exceed, is, is greater than the unified fee, if you follow me. So, if we're gonna go through one process, one public hearing, one advertisement, that's whatever fee we set it, if we have to do five or six, they should add up to more than the single fee. Everyone follow that?
Yep. What if we what if we adopted a policy that said for multiple special permits for the same project, we would charge, we would charge one fee, whichever happened to be the highest, for that special permit, and then if, if we can consolidate them, we would only charge half the fee for any subsequent special permit. If they could, if, if they could be consolidated, if they couldn't, then they'd have to pay full fee for subsequent special permit. That might be a policy.
We're able to do one notice. I, I would opt for discharging whatever the higher fee is. I mean, you know, if someone is looking to get something done in town, I, I mean, I don't know, it's if there's not gonna be secret proceedings, I don't understand why we would have separate fees.
Well, well, here's, here's the thing, Nathan. The notice would be longer. There, there, there would be more, there'd be more words in the notice, so it would be a higher cost in the newspaper to us, you know, for, you know, more column space. We, we could probably consolidate the mailing that goes out. That would change.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But if they, if they can't be, if they can't be consolidated, there, there's probably gonna have to be two mailings.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think the value of putting a, a set fee for the consolidated approach is to encourage the applicant to consolidate for our, our efficiency, you know, for efficiency's sake. And if they can't consolidate, then they, we have to charge it out separately, and that will be more costly. It's more of our time involved, plus the other things that Jeff's pointing out.
Can I ask you just a quick question for, since I think this got discussed when I, the part of the meeting last time I wasn't at? So, we're, we're having this conversation, working off the special permit fee schedule that we approved in February, is that correct?
Yeah, well, they, we felt like the, we felt like the, the, the existing special permit schedule didn't answer the question.
Yeah, oh, I, no, I, I think that makes sense. I'm just trying to, it's so, it looked, I'm just trying to put numbers to it. So, with a residential use with open space plan would be four hundred dollars plus a hundred per lot created, so that's sort of for the open space plan, and then the shared driveway would be residential use with no open space plan, because there's nothing that calls out a shared driveway, so that would be a separate four hundred bucks, right? Those are the two things we're looking at?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Unless, well, there could be yet a third one, if he's seeking any waivers to that open space design. Let's see. Now, I, I know waivers are by special permit, but if it's already a special permit, yeah, there's a possibility, we'd have to talk about that, there's a possibility of three.
Three special permits?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the only thing I could think about this, and I don't, I don't wrap my head around it enough to understand it, but if it's, if they're packaged, does that sort of imply contention approvals? So that, you know, is it possible that one could approve a special, an open space design, but not have a shared driveway, in which case you would maybe want to have them separate because you don't want to conflate decision-making with paying a fee? Does that make sense?
I'm not getting it yet.
I was just, so they could, if we bundled them together, and said, you're doing an open space design, you're doing a common drive, you know, we're gonna do one hearing process. Is it possible on the far end of the hearing process that they could get an open space design approved, but somehow not get the common driveway approved? And they were under the, there's, by bundling, we sort of create more assumptions of, now, I'm talking myself out of the question, forget it.
Yeah, I, I think it's easy to kind of overthink this, guys.
Yeah.
Let's keep it simple.
Well, I think, you know, there's value in trying to anticipate, you know, what you run into. So.
It is, Nathan, but what, but what we've learned in the past is, we can never anticipate completely what we can, what, you know, what, in a, in a plan, in a special permit, all the, all the variables, all the possibilities.
Well, that's, that's true. But here, I'm just spitballing, but what if you, what if you had a criterion that for for, for, for a special perm, for a special permit hearing process, that the charge for special permits, permit or permits would be the highest, would be the highest fee for whatever special permit would be granted? If it, if, if something wasn't granted, and they wanted to go on later, they, they'd pay the special permit fee for, for whatever had been not approved at the previous, at the previous special permit process.
I, no, actually, I understand what Deacon said, and I, I thought, I think it's an idea, no.
You say it again?
Yeah, you say it.
Basically, you pay a fee if you get a special permit for something, or if you don't get a special permit for something that was included in the consolidated thing, you pay that fee anyway, and you try again next time, and you pay another fee. Is that correct, Deacon?
That's what I meant.
That's what I thought he meant.
Okay, so I was going in the right direction, but I didn't finish my thought, that's good.
No, I, I actually think that covers it, because you, as, as the applicant, take that risk.
Yes, it does, it does, because that was the concern, right? If, if you have the, you know, if you, if you have a, what, a open space design, right, which is a fee based on the number of lots, and then you have a shared driveway. Right, so maybe, you know, the number of lots is higher, and, you know, they, you know, goes through the process, and you say, yeah, you had a lower number of lots that's gonna get approved, but you pay the, or, or maybe you say the driveway, shared driveway's higher, you don't get the shared driveway, you have to do something else. You know, you have to eat, you know, you paid the fee for the shared driveway because it was the highest portion of. No, but not if it's, if it's not approved, I was saying, you don't pay for that one. You pay for the, you pay for the highest, you pay for the highest fee special permit that is approved.
Yeah, but we still, even if it's not approved, we still have to add, you know,
Yeah.
have to advertise and, and go through all this.
Yeah, sure.
So, here's a question. Can you guys imagine, I, if there's an open space plan, doesn't it almost infer that there's a shared driveway?
You can have a one lot open space design.
But any multiple, multiple lot one would have to have a shared driveway, right?
Couldn't have a
It's conceivable, but conceivable that that, that they may not. We may not be interested in it if it doesn't have a shared driveway, because that's a better way to consolidate curb cuts and stuff.
But there might be, but there might be open space designs where, where we would agree that two driveways were appropriate. Or more than one driveway was appropriate in an open space design.
Okay.
Possibly.
Okay.
What about if we were to have a policy that said that for multiple special permits, no matter how many there, there are, you pay one and a half times the most expensive one? And that.
I don't, I don't, that seems very arbitrary.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know.
Well, it's more work, guys.
No, 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 I, I, I don't, I don't think we're disagreeing that it's more work, but if we follow three quarters of what Deacon suggested before, and instead, but, but if, if something gets broken out of the special permit, single fee special permit that was not approved, and they have to, they have to buy, you know, get another special permit for some small aspect of the project, they pay that fee in addition. That's, I, I, I really think because we have to go through the, we have to go through more trouble, the planning board does, more time and effort to get that secondary special permit approved. So, they pay for it in the single fee. If anything gets, is not approved within that, and they needed another special permit for some aspect of the project, they pay that fee.
So, I haven't, I don't wanna sidetrack with Steve what you said, but I'm just thinking, I could support this for residential uses, and then, which is really only two items. There's residential uses with and without open space plan, so if it applied to just those two, it takes a lot of the variables out. It's either four hundred bucks or four hundred bucks plus each lot created for the special permits. So, for like business uses and, and things like that, they would, they would have to pay whatever the fee is. That could make the math easier, because you really, you only have two choices.
So, you're saying business uses pay just individual fees for all, all special permits required? Residential just pays the, the highest fee?
Well, I don't know, I, it could be that it's the highest fee, I was just trying to make it simpler to say that, you know, if we limit it to residential uses, which, you know, we tend to want to be helpful to human beings. You know, human beings, yes, can own businesses, but in terms of this. So, there's really only two fees that you can pay. You can pay four hundred bucks for each required special permit if there's no open space plan. And then you pay four hundred dollars plus each lot created if it is an open space plan. So, there's only two things that are in play. So, it might just, in terms of like your recommendation, Jeff, about the one and a half, whatever, it sort of puts it in context of, you know, they can only pay two line items. Four hundred or four hundred plus a hundred. You guys see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I was, this is what I'm thinking about right here. Seems like that's the only stuff that we're looking at.
So, let, let me ask a question about this. If, if we so, we do business use, right? I want to put in a wireless communications facility, and I want to put in a, a light industry facility. Right, so there's the application fee, a butter notification fee, there's none, right, because that's assumed to be included in the application fee. Legal notice fee, that's, that's the newspapers, right? Peer review fee as needed. Permit management fee, there's a consultant, that's as needed, that's all separate, right? So, the legal notice fee is actual cost. So, that's gonna be, in addition to the fifteen hundred dollars, whatever it costs to post an ad in the paper. So, that actually, that rebuts Jeff's comment on more words. And if, so.
But what I'm saying, Nathan, is there's sort of like two different animals. There's the residential, which, like, we had the conversation at the beginning, you know, like in February when we did this, that we made it simpler, so there's no a butter notification fees, no legal notice fees, no peer review fees, we just bundled it in for residences, and then we broke out other fees for business uses. So, what I'm suggesting is that if we do any bundling just to make things simpler for people and potentially a little cheaper, you would limit it to residential because we're already leaning in that direction, but make no changes to the business stuff, which is more complex anyway.
Right, so, in terms of, you know, what, what the expenses that the application fee is covering, I mean, essentially, that would be coordination performed by the paid land use clerk when we hire one? I mean, I, I, I apologize, I haven't been through any, you haven't been through a, a special permit, and I don't understand the work that's involved. So, I mean, I, I need to ask these questions and, and understand what we're discussing.
Well, I think it's, I mean, this is, I mean, I have been through a few, but not as many as everyone else. My sense is the purpose of an application fee generally is to cover expenses, but also just because, as Jeff said, there's work that's getting done, and so it needs, it needs to sort of reflect that there's, there's a lot of stuff going on, it takes effort, whether, you know, we're all volunteers, but nonetheless, the more complex the process, the more, so like, that's why I'm saying the business stuff is more complex, and we had conversations about why we made that different. But if, if a resident wanted to come forward and they had a, an open space plan, or they had some special permit need, bundling would be going in the direction of sort of working with them. But the, the reason I, I put this chart on is because I think if you did that, you're really only looking at those first two lines, and there's not a lot of variability there. So, it's.
And Nathan, just a heads up that the, the, the fees, the special permit fees for residential or the other ones for businesses, it's not a direct reimbursement of costs. It's at, at the, at the minimal reimbursing the town for out-of-pocket costs, but it's not one, a one-for-one, you know?
Well, I understand that it's an approximation of it, but I'm just trying to understand what those costs are. You know, there's a legal fee notice of, we have to post the notice of the special permit hearing and in the newspaper, and so on and so forth. And, and, you know, so the other cost would be any time by paid municipal staff in support of the special permit proceedings, and, and required filings, you know, addressing public record requests, things, and pertaining to the project, things like that. Would that be an accurate characterization of what the?
Those are what I would call, those are what I would call direct costs. Those are what I would call, those are what I would call direct costs. And yes, those all need to be covered, but what I'm saying is it's not. We go beyond just the direct out of pocket cost to make sure the town isn't caught. For paying anything, any money. It's, it's, uh, there's enough.
I understand it's not a, a one for one. I'm just trying, I, I'm trying to understand what the nature of. The costs are, you know, like, you know, it. If that makes sense.
Well, it's also, I think.
They are, yeah, the land use clerk, they're spending time, you know, all the documentation received, they have to make copies of it and file it with the clerk and so on, you know, they have to go to. You know, the, the courthouse and file, uh, you know, documents with, you know, the. You know, um. Uh, the registry of deeds, right? You know, that. Okay, that's the answer. That's, that's all I'm looking for.
Well, there is the, I think besides the indirect, there's also sort of the. The cost of entry, so to speak. So if there's no cost for submitting a special permit. You could have more people do it because there's no cost to doing it. So we would be finding ourselves having to do hearings and paperwork and responding to a lot more requests. That were, um, I don't know if they would be frivolous, but they could be exploratory. So if you put a, a dollar sign on it, then people have to stop and say, do I want to plunk down this amount of money to start the process? Where if there's no cost to start the process. A lot of explore, exploration would occur and we don't have the ability to maintain that. Does that make sense?
No, that makes sense. That makes sense. And I think that's valid. No, that's, that's, that's a good answer. That, that helps. I appreciate that. Thank you. Here, let me, let me, uh, let me throw another one out and maybe, maybe I'm just repeating other people. But what if we, what if it underneath this, um, this fee schedule, there was a note to the effect that. In a, in a, in a. A special permit application. In a consolidated special permit. Hearing process. You will be charged per, per lot created plus, plus four hundred dollars. Plus half the, the list price. Of. Of the less expensive. Special permits applied for.
Getting a volume discount.
Yeah, yeah, because, because we. We're trying to, we, we want these things to be consolidated. We, it's, it's worth it, it's worth it. It's worth it to consolidate to us to, and charge less.
About, can I riff off of that, Deacon?
Please.
So. I, I think what I would. I could support is if we, if we're limiting it to resident, residential uses, that we could say. In instances where multiple special perm. Multiple residential special permits is, are sought. If consolidated. The second, you know, the second and subsequent. Special permits are half the cost.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, but just limiting it to residential and as you said. Requiring the caveat that it's consolidated at the get go. So.
And make that a note below the schedule.
Yeah, that would work.
And so what happens if they enter into that? With the idea to consolidate. But circumstances prevent that.
Well, I think I'm taking off from Jeff and saying that they still have to pay.
I'm, I'm good with that. I'm, that I'm good with.
I mean, and then they can come, and then if they have to come back, they just. Be for one special permit that was originally denied, they pay the regular price.
I'm good with that as well.
This, this kind of reminds me of a conversation we had where if somebody submits a special permit application. Right? Even if they don't, if it's not complete, if it's not a good, you know, right? We, we would still have to initiate a. A public hearing out. They submitted the, uh, an application and we have to move forward on it. Is that what the lawyer says?
Yeah.
That's what the lawyer says, right? So then, you know, they pay the fee.
Right. I think the key language.
Denied because they didn't get anything together for whatever part of it. Then, you know, we still opened the process, you know, we still follow the process and if they want to do it again, they would have to pay a new fee. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, the key is per application. So if they get rejected for anything and they have to reapply, then they have to.
They have to pay.
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement. I mean, that was a variation of the theme that I suggested earlier.
So I'm willing to take a, a shot at just writing this note. Um, and then I could maybe send it to maybe two people to look at. One being Deacon. I don't know if someone else wants to look at it, just.
Look at it.
Cool. Okay. Right. And then we can, I'll bring it to, bring it to the meeting next, next time we meet.
Okay. And. And one thing I would note too is that, um. When I looked earlier today at the special permit schedule, it's not clear to me that, um. For residential uses. Four hundred dollars necessarily even covers the legal fees. I think there could easily be cases where for, that where the town was out of pocket money.
That, that's true, actually. If it involves Donna's, any kind of. Time for legal counsel.
No, no, I'm just talking about legal notice fee.
I see, I see.
I mean, I mean, two legal notices could easily be more than four hundred dollars.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, then I think.
I don't think we need to decide this tonight, but I, I think we should review this and, because I'm not, I'm not sure that these are all enough.
Deacon, that's a really good point and I, I, I'll be frank, I don't know what it costs to. Put these legal notices in newspapers.
Varies with length and, you know.
Can you, um, from looking at past?
I'm gonna do a silly thing and, uh, volunteer to try and, to go into town hall and get some records on the. Cost of legal notices on, uh, past special permit applications. Yeah. I mean, I know that when I, when I, when I was strictly guessing. On the. On the legal notice fees for the, for the solar, so I could do the budget, I put down five hundred bucks per notice. And then those would be lawn notices, but. A residential one could be two hundred easy.
Yeah. So, so if Nathan's willing to do that, it comes up with a range.
Yeah.
Of fees, we could then make it an informed decision.
Yeah, but these could easily be wrong.
Yeah, I, I think that would be great, Nathan. I mean, it seems to me either we adjust the application fee. You know, upwards or we can. Sort of replicate what we have in the other ones, which is actually do actual costs for the legal notice. And then adjust the application fee maybe lower if we want.
Yeah, the legal notice fees is, that's really where the money is.
Okay. Cool.
Okay, this will be fun. So in other words, uh, no action, further research required.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but that was, that was, I, that was in addition to the, to the, to the real, to the actual discussion we were having. Before, which was to, to arrive at the language that. That Michael's going to try to put out.
Yeah. Well, we can bundle them because we're going to have to. Vote on a revised fee schedule. So if we have both of them at the next meeting, we can just consolidate those changes.
Yeah, yeah. Wait, what? I thought this was only for residential anyway. What, what was the other one?
No, 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 this whole document is the fee schedule. So what I'm saying is that if we're going to change. Add the note that we talked about for the multiple applications and then if we make any changes based on your research. We would just approve a revised fee schedule the next time we meet.
Yeah, with two separate questions.
Okay, so, uh. So as far as the minutes go. Is, is, are we?
We're, I'm, I'm developing language that will get reviewed next meeting and you're bringing information so that we can look at the. Costs that we're charging for residential applications.
You're, you're looking at the legal notice fee from previous, uh, permits, special permits.
Yeah.
The range of.
Particularly residential ones.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, the, the non-residential, it doesn't matter because if it's actual cost, it's actual cost for coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have a plan.
Cool.
Okay, so I'm just gonna put Michael with developed language for, uh, consolidate, uh, for fees. With a consolidated, uh. Special permits.
And since Jeff is conspicuously absent, we should come up with something that he should do.
Like that.
Well, he'll, he'll probably be back soon. You better hurry, Steve.
Here it comes. I see the shadow.
Listening, he's got the volume cranked up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
He's a Zoom professional.
So. So, so are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. How to respond to messages to the planning board? Uh, I have to confess, I've not done. I've not, I've not been responding to the solar messages. There are very many.
But didn't. Didn't last time, Michael, didn't you suggest kind of a boilerplate response just to let them know they, we've received it?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know. I volunteered last night, but I'm happy to use that language and just respond for us. Um, and CC everyone. So, because I looked, you know, just in the last couple of weeks, there were four people who emailed us. And I think just to be respectful of them getting an acknowledgement saying we, we, we got it.
Yeah.
You know, is sufficient. And so I'm, I'm happy to do it. I, you know, I was. Brought it up only because. I didn't see any response and so it's, it's really awkward to know if we responded and I didn't know, or we didn't respond at all. Um, so that was why I brought it up. But Deacon, if, if you're, if you're happy. To pass along that burden, I'm more than willing to send out the template language we talked about last time and CC everybody. Um, you know, just so we all know that. You know, if someone walks up to us and said, I wrote to you guys and I didn't hear back. We know what's up. That's sort of what I was thinking about.
Yeah, and, and. And I think this has to do, I mean. There are messages that, that I have responded to, I mean, where. You know, where it's not just an opinion, there's, um. There's an action required on our part that's, that's more than just, more than just acknowledgement.
Yeah, I wouldn't touch those because those, those are substance.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, and in fact, you know, if in the off chance that I responded to something. Where there is substance, I don't think it cancels it out because the acknowledgement is basically saying, we got it. So you could follow up.
They're not mutually exclusive.
That's true. Well, I'm happy if you want to do that. But if anyone, you know, brings up the video, uh. Any members of the public ever watch this recording? Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure, I know I read all the emails we get. Just FYI, public.
So, so Deacon, it sounded like you're fine with me doing that.
I'm fine with that. I, I, yeah.
Do we need any kind of a motion for, make this happen or is this just, uh? A casual thing?
Yeah, we should probably have a motion. I'm, I'm wondering whether we want to also, um. In, if. If, if this is going to be just a, a rote message, maybe it's difficult, but. Um, if, if we could encourage people to attend our meeting.
Yeah, that's part of it.
And, and, and possibly list the date of the next meeting.
Yeah.
So. Uh, uh, you, you might even say, you know, we, we, we can't do this offline. We, we do this at meetings. We appreciate your input. We're going to be meeting on, um. On September thirteenth, um, please consider joining the meeting or something.
Yeah, exactly. I think that would, the specificity of dates are great add. And, but I think that's the invitation, you know, we can't do this online and need to hear from you.
Uh, you know, noting the date of the next meeting is, uh, difficult if, if we do. My suggestion, but, but I mean, could, couldn't we do an automated response from the, uh. Planet, you know, playing, planning at shootsbury.org? Um, thank you for your email, you know, that, you know, we, you know, your emails are, are reviewed. You know, for. You know, if it's official, you know, business, a member of the planning board will reach out to you. Um, note that, you know, for, I mean, we might have, you know, tweak the language a little bit, like, you know, if you have a. You know, if there's a. You know, there's public comment at meetings and there's public comment, it's special permit, uh, hearings. You know, like, just kind of like give a little blurb about, you know, what the. You know, the formal outlets are for public comment.
I, I, I feel, there's two things I, I guess I would say in response. One is. Ironically, I think it makes it more complicated. Because then every email that goes to that email address kicks back that thing.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a little harder to manage. And I think. If part of what we're trying to do, like I just looked. You know, in June, there were four people, you know, and they're all residents. Um, you know, so to be able to just write them, it's going to be the same information, but. It'll be coming from a human being and I think it, there's. A public relations, for lack of a better word of like, you know, we saw this, we're, we're responding to you kind of thing.
Yeah.
And with, with respect to the date, um. I wonder if we should say that the, our default date for meetings is, is the second Monday of the, is the. Second Monday evening of the month, um. And, and some note about how that isn't always the case.
Yeah, and point them to the calendar because.
You mentioned that if the Zoom meeting isn't up right at seven, just wait longer.
To call Nathan.
And at some point, it won't, it won't all be Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, but it'll still be listed on the calendar.
Yeah. All right. So I'm going to make a motion that Michael, that the board approve Michael coming up with a response. Acknowledging. Emails to the planning board.
Any more discussion? I'll call the roll. Uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jeff?
That's an eye.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an eye. Good. Who seconded? Jeff did.
So moving right along here at nine o'clock, nine oh five?
Yeah. Uh, associate members. We, we agreed at last meeting. To start notifying people. One thing I realized after the meeting was that, that we didn't set any date for people to get back to us. Um, and I think we should, I think that would have. And that's why I didn't send out a notice. Because I wasn't, uh, because I couldn't tell people what that number was, what that date was. So I, I think we should talk about that and, and whatever. And, and if there are any other. Concerns about what should be in the. In the message. But the date, the date is important.
Did you guys discuss? Including any kind of expectation of what the. Role would be in terms of. Meetings or participation or anything like that?
We talked about, we talked about, um. Using the language in the, um, that was.
Okay, got it.
That was used in the, um.
In the bylaw?
In the town meeting.
Okay.
In the town meeting warrant article.
Cool, great.
And so per the minutes, right, you know, the motion was, uh. Solicited associate planning board members using town announce, word of mouth, ad hoc, social media by board members.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, interested community members can contact board or the chair. And that was it. So we need to add, uh. I mean. We, we, we want to have a, a response. But in, in reality, you know, the. You know, we can, we can give a time limit, but we're not going to move on until we have sufficient applicants.
Well, I guess the, the, the thing about it, the helpful thing about having a date though is. If. We get one person, just say we get one person. And. And it's, we're not particularly thrilled, right? You know, so the question is. Do we just not, we just hold it open for a long time? Or do we? A date sort of says, we got the process, we, we saw what we got, we want to recommend someone or not. And then redo it. I don't know. It, there, it seems like there is a benefit to the date, but we're not beholden to it either.
I put, I put it out on Nextdoor. I just said as soon as possible. And, you know, then specify. I mean, I would assume it would be at the board's discretion. I understand where you're coming from, Deacon, with. You know, I mean, it's good to have some kind of cohesion with the board on this. So like, you know. What we're trying to do in terms of the timeline.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, well, right.
Have we received anything from anyone? And I, I know we have it in the email, but.
Get anything. But, but we haven't done the town announce either, so.
Right.
And we can put it, you know, one thing I'm thinking about is. I can create like the equivalent of a paragraph describing it from the language that we talked about. And put it on the website so that we can all link to it. Just, it makes it much shorter in terms of. What you're pushing out. So I could, I could do that in the next, you know, couple of days. And just share that link. So if you're sending it to an email or you're sending it to town announce, we can just link to that.
Yeah, there was another thing that was missing from the motion last time is that, you know, we didn't include the website. I mean, I don't think that really means we can't do it, but. We, we could probably, you know, amend that to say that we're going to post it on the website as well.
Yeah, and I think that the. It would seem like the, 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 the information used from the town meeting would be. Would pretty much get you to what, what, what you're talking about, Michael.
Yeah, I think I would mostly just cut and paste that and stick it into. Just another document that people would see because the one that's on the website now is. Probably, people might get confused because it's just linking to the associate members and it has sort of the language and. So I would just simplify. And take, extract the stuff that's relevant to people who are interested.
Yeah.
I agree with you completely.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's talk about the date some more because, I mean, I agree, we don't necessarily have to be held to it, but. It would seem like it would be really helpful.
Well, when's our September meeting? Do we have a note what that date is? Let's see, because the.
Well, I know you, I know you suggested that, that we not meet in August, Michael, but I don't.
That was my hope.
But I don't think we've decided that yet.
No. But I'm, I'm just wondering, it's just in terms of applications, you know, whether people would. It seems like you'd get better response at the, it's September when people refocus whether we meet or not. So our September. Meeting is the 13th, so the week after Labor Day. That would give people the rest of the summer if they were interested.
And, and, and some time, if the, and some time back in town. After they've been away.
Yeah. So if we, if we ask them to get it to, you know, to. To us by, say, you know, the eighth, which is the Wednesday after Labor Day and several days before we meet. I don't know if that's enough time, Deacon, to sort of. Follow up with them if we want to sort of. Tighten that up a little bit, maybe this, the day after Labor Day, because we would, I'm assuming we would do what we did with. The vacancy with Nathan is that we would. Look at the, what people wrote and then invite them to a meeting. Or maybe not. Maybe we just look at them and have a conversation and then decide who we want to invite. That actually might be better.
Well, we're not meeting, so. So then we're talking about inviting to a, a meeting in October.
Potentially. We, I, I'm, I'm just saying, it's either we invite them. We get it, all the, all the ones that are interested and we invite them and we talk to them. At the same time, or we discuss them and then figure out who we want to invite. So in that case, yeah, it would be October.
And this will all be. Public, no executive session, right? It wasn't with me.
Yeah.
You know, when they, when it was.
Yeah, and I mean, right now, as far as. I know we don't have any applications. In for any of the solar stuff, so. Could happen at any moment, but. You know.
Well, well. What if we? The 13th sounds like a good date, but, or the eighth, but what? Is there, what, is there any reason not to invite anybody who's interested to a meeting on the 13th?
Only awkwardness if we're not interested in them.
I think. You know. Last year, when, when I was appointed, it was a real fast turnaround. There was a meeting on a Monday for the planning board. And then the select board had another meeting. On Tuesday, right? So. I mean. If, if, if there's not going to be an executive session, you know, we're going to have to. Just go through the list of candidates and say, you know. Recommend for joint meeting with the select board, yay or nay. So, I mean, you know, and I think it would be at the chair's discretion whether or not we're going to hold that vote. Or I guess I even so could make a motion. For it, but.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm talking myself into the, doing it at the same time because it seems like. To make a decision to recommend, you at least have to. Talk to the person, you know, everyone's more than just what they represent on paper. So. It could, or we at least do the interview with them. So everyone who's submitted. Comes to the meeting, we talk to them. Whether we vote that night is maybe a separate. Issue, you know.
Yeah, exactly. I, because it seems to me that. If we invite, if we invite anybody who's interested to that meeting on the 13th, it speeds the process a little.
Yeah. So, and we could either vote on the 13th or we can come up with another meeting just to do that, that vote.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can leave that part open.
Yeah. Cool. Okay.
So you'll, someone's going to send the town announce and say, you know, we're going to have a meeting and we, we want to invite everyone. To that, you know, if you're interested, please send us something by the eighth.
Yeah.
Is discussion good for this? Do we need a motion?
I think this is good.
Okay, yeah.
Does anybody object to anything that's been said?
No, not me.
Okay, good. We'll do that.
Yeah, all right.
Only one more thing, Jeff. Then you get to eat dinner.
Not for me, there's not just one more thing.
Okay, so.
Did, 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 did we agree? Did we agree we're not meeting in August?
No, not yet. Not yet. Let's, let's do non-recusal first.
Yeah, so this is quick. The select board met last week. Because they had to talk about non-recusal because Melissa's in the butter, so she has to go through that process if she wants to talk about. At least one of the solar sites. And what? The select board decided is that they were going to cover the costs of. Getting a member non-recused, i.e. the cost of appraisal. And so I communicated with, and. They decided that town officials shouldn't have to pay out of pocket for that. So I communicated with Rita and her advice. Rita's now the chair, by the way, if people didn't know. What Rita said was. If the planning board. Has the money, that they should. Reimburse anyone, in this case, me, for the cost of. Becoming non-recused and then, you know, down the line, if, if Deacon has to do it. And if the planning board doesn't have the money, she recommended that. We just submit a request to the FinCom to, to have that paid.
That, that, that money's in our budget.
Okay.
I mean, because I, because I, I spoke about this issue to the FinCom and this is why, this is why Susie Mosher voted against the planning board budget.
Good to know. So, and I think we already voted on it, you know. You know, conceptually, we voted on this probably six months ago, but I, we didn't have logistics at that point.
Yeah, but, but the money's there and, and. You should get repaid.
Yeah. Do you want me to just send you an email with the, the two bills? So you can send that along to the FinCom or whoever, whoever, the town accountant?
Yeah, but I mean, we're, I mean, we're, I don't think just the email is going to do it. I mean.
No, 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 I, I've got the, the bill.
Yeah.
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 I said. Okay.
A physical copy of the bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Should I send it to you or you want to just send it to, yeah, I'll send it to you and you can deliver it to Town Hall?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and, and, you know, just make a request for, and I'll just make a request for payment to you.
Great. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, and then. Becky and I have spoken about. About. Eight, 10 dash 7C in our zoning, which, which prohibits solar. Solar installations in. Critical natural landscape and, and core habitat. Becky has talked to Donna about this and. And I think the board needs to be clear, a little, a little clearer on, on this situation because. I, I talked to Jeff about it too, and he is, he has told me that this is something that can be waived in. And they should not be able to, the developer should not be able to do, use this as a way to overturn our zoning.
We're an unanticipated business, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Make sure we got that in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I was going to ask a question, but I didn't want to mock up the agenda. So. What? I just got from what you said, Deacon, was that. Because. Jeff's, and I, I would have to look at it too, but if, what Jeff's, what you said is if it can be waived. Therefore, it can't be held up as unreasonable. Is, is that? I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know if it could be waived enough, but that's what you're saying?
Well, well, the question is whether our zoning could be overturned. On its face.
Yeah.
spatially, without a case, without an outcome, or whether it would be as applied. Because. You know, the, the, that part that Deacon was talking about was, was all the categories of biomap and, and habitat and things where. The solar facilities are prohibited. That's a lot of land in Chutesbury and they're, they're large, grossly drawn polygons. And the idea is that. That as applied, if you're, if you're proposing a solar farm in part of those polygons, that they would be assessed. And. If it was a real critical part of the, of the habitat, then, then maybe that, that, that would, you know, we would hold them to that. Or if it wasn't particularly critical, we could, we could waive that. And, and allow the facility within the, the habitat area. But, but the question, the question is whether it would get to that point. I, I think that, that they'd have to actually, I don't think there would be a case. That would be ripe unless we actually denied them based on that. So. That'd be a great question for Donna if she was here right now. You know. Whether there's any realistic. Prospect of, of AMP or anybody else challenging our bylaw. Without first submitting an application and getting a denial. So. My thought is that, that it would probably be as applied. I'm, I'm having lunch with my friend Bob Ritchie on Friday and I'll make sure to ask him this question. He usually has some good insights about this. Kind of thing. But. Anyway, that's the idea of those, of those areas, that they're large and, and that, that we'd have to assess. Where exactly the thing is proposed before we make a decision whether to. Hold them to it or waive it.
So. You're going to talk to Bob Ritchie? Should, should. Should we agree now that, that. You're delegated to, to talk to Donna if you feel the need?
Yeah, now, so Becky's having, what, conversations of her own with Donna?
Apparently, that's.
It's, you know, this gets back to the whole thing of Becky should not be in the middle of this process. I mean. If, if there's questions from the developer, they should be asking us in advance because we have this open door invitation to ask us questions before you apply. I mean, it's, I think it's good to get the information, but. I don't think we should do a lot of work in. Being, you know, communicating to Becky and communicating to developers through this roundabout process. If a developer is interested in doing a project. It should come before the planning board and say, we have a question about this. Can you let us know what you think? And then we can do stuff. So I don't want, I don't want Jeff. Not to get the information, but I also. What, what I keep seeing happening is that like. There's all this outside of the official planning board process. Discussion that's going on and no one, no one officially talks to us, which is just, I don't think appropriate.
And those, those parts of the solar bylaw were in there from the beginning. This is not something we added recently. That was from the start, way before AMP ever proposed anything.
Can, can we just lose the chair?
What?
We just lost the chair.
No. Oh, Deacon, we did, yeah.
I don't see them.
Yeah.
Got tired.
Yeah, he was eating soup and he hit the wrong button.
Isn't the, the question at the end on this issue, whether. The, the bylaw can be overturned by this clause and, you know, awareness of that, not necessarily, you know, the nature of the conversations being had?
I think the question is whether the bylaw is, is, can be successfully challenged on its face or whether you have to go through an actual. An, an actual application and someone. You know, there's a question of ripeness, whether the thing is ripe for a court decision. And usually that's not until the planning board is ruled.
Is ripeness a legal term?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's also a blueberry term and. I'm trying to get my blueberry ads out tonight.
So, so, you know, Jeff, just to play this out, so I can imagine, you know, you talk to Bob and get the information. And then maybe you talk to Donna and get information. And then based on that, you know, we could talk, you know, someone could tell Becky, Becky calls the developer, the developer gets whatever information we have. And then this whole exchange and no one's come before the planning board. You know, so there's no. Public view of it. And so, you know, I, I, what I'm trying to do is figure out. If there's questions that the develop, like, why, why do we care if they haven't submitted anything? You know, if they're, if they're, because all they're doing is. Doing this free work before they apply. I think the, you know, you should gather the information, but I think the message should be. If there's a developer, any developer in the world who wants to do a project in Chutesbury. If they have a question, the planning board is very happy to discuss it with them. As opposed to communicating through the town administrator, who's not part of the special permit process at all. Right?
Well, yeah, and who's, who's going to our attorney? Our, and, and our attorney approved all these bylaws and helped, helped us write them.
Yeah.
So it's a little squirrely.
But that's a good word.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask Bob on Friday just because I'm really curious myself.
Oh, you should. I, you know, I think we lost Deacon because when he was suggesting that we empower you to do that, and I would. I guess I'll make the motion, you know, I would. I would, I would move that the board delegate Jeff to. I would, I would move that the board delegate Jeff to talk to Bob Ritchie and gather information about the question at hand about. The. Waiver component and the biomap component of this solar bylaw. As he sees fit.
So you're looking for a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, in lieu, in lieu of the chair, having been chair of other committees, I'll, I'll call the roll.
Before you call the roll, Michael.
Yeah.
Let's, let's have some.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
Let me make sure I have the motion down. I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Sure, thank you. Deacon's back.
Alright. So.
My Al Haig moment is gone.
Research. The question of. Of ripeness. With respect. To the solar bylaw.
And the biomap provision.
Yeah, particularly the biomap two and. Critical wildlife habitat.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was kicked out briefly. What happened?
I didn't.
I didn't kick you out. What? Well, it must have been my machine. I had a blank screen for, for a couple of minutes. So what did you guys talk about?
I, I took up your mantle and made a motion to delegate to Jeff and we're just discussing.
And so the motion, as I have at Deacon, is. Designate Lacy to research the question of ripeness with respect to the solar bylaw. In particular, the. The clause on. Biomap two and critical wildlife habitat for. What provisions for challenging court.
So that's a motion that's been made and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so Deacon, we're, we're just. Yeah, I, I'm just going to do this informally with. With Bob at lunch Friday and, and just ask him whether, you know, the town could really be challenged at this point on those provisions or whether. You know, we'd have, actually have to deny somebody's application. Based on them being in biomap or, or something like that.
Or impose conditions.
Yeah.
Favorable conditions, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, 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 the, any denial can be challenged for any reason that, that, that they have. But the question is, without even an application, can, can somebody just come in?
Yeah.
And, and challenge the bylaw?
Yeah, and, and. Part of my thought was to authorize you to talk to Donna too, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I was in the motion.
Okay.
That is in the motion. Okay. Research the question and speak with Donna?
Usually Donna asks me what Bob said.
Well, that's why I said if you needed to.
No, I'll, 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 I'll cover it with Donna too. It should be 15 minutes at the most.
And who is Bob who?
Oh, it's, it's Bob Ritchie. He's a municipal attorney, well-known attorney in the state.
Okay.
It's R I T, right?
Yes. R I T C H I E.
Okay. Let's. So we're done talking about it? Should I call the roll?
I hope so.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, Nathan? Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. Let's talk about our next meeting, when it is.
I know that I'm away on the ninth, but bargain.
Me too. I was thinking giving ourselves a break and starting in September.
I'm having a ba, my wife is having a baby in August.
Really?
What are you doing?
I'm providing moral support and.
You're, you're taking care of the other one.
Well, yeah, yep, yep.
So are, are, are we agreed that, that we should skip August unless something comes up?
I, I, I'm good with.
Do this one by acclamation?
Yeah, I hope, I hope so, because. We might have to call a meeting, but. Not scheduling August sounds good to me.
Yep.
Cool. Nathan, when's the due date?
August 9th.
For real?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, yeah, that, you know, if you have a meeting in August, there's a little chance I'll be there.
Okay. Okay, that worked.
Although, although, you know. Our, our son was two weeks late. So, you know, that may be. The way this one goes too. Who can say?
Alright.
Yeah, so, yeah, for. Yeah, next meeting, September.
So I have a, a quick question. If everyone could just check your email. And, and answer this one question for me. Would Michael's boilerplate response be appropriate for that most recent email that we all received?
Is this from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Because there is misinformation in that email, but I don't know whether it just, you just do a boilerplate or what?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would just send a boilerplate, you know, so it's acknowledging, we got it, offering that they come to the next, she comes to the next meeting, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Let's put it this way, the, you know, the person that you dealt with in Wheelock?
Yeah.
The select board used to send template responses to that person too.
Okay, thank you. Well. The, the template response might want to include that. We're not scheduled till September.
Duly noted.
Yeah.
Or actually that we are meeting on August 9th.
I'll move to adjourn.
I second that. Hey, Piper?
Hi.
Okay.
So do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, good night, everybody.
Thank you all.
I'm getting blueberries.
Okay.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Nathan.